Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the April 20th, 2021 meeting of the Planning Board at 7:00. The Planning Board members will be meeting in person, allowing the public to access and participate in the meeting via in-person attendance at the Wolfboro Town Hall or via GoToMeeting through the login information below. HTTPS colon slash slash global dot com, GoToMeeting dot com, COM slash join slash nine one eight two four two four two nine. If you have problems, you could email the Planning Director at wolfborowneuhampshire.us. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a roll call vote, so I'll go ahead and...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Since everyone is present, you can skip that.
Oh, I can?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right, great.
We can do all in favor, we can do all of that fun stuff now.
Okay, all right, great, very good, glad to hear that. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the public hearing, which was continued from April 6th. This is a public hearing for the scenic road construction reclaiming pavement, adding gravel replacement, and upgrading drainage and removal of dead or dying trees, then repaving on Stonem Road, Cotton Mountain Road to Brookfield Town Line. This was continued from April 6th in order to make sure that everybody had total access to the plans. Also, according to information we received from Dave, and I'm sure you mentioned this, that you have already conducted a site visit with the tree warden. Okay, so why don't you go ahead?
Madam Chair, I just want to announce I'm going to recuse myself from this like I did last two weeks ago.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
Okay, David Ford, Public Works. So, yes, the set of plans, the complete set of construction plans, the 14 drawings, but I gave this complete set of construction and then a set that was highlighted with the trees, the 22 trees we originally asked to be cut down. At last meeting, we did have some concern with Suzanne Ryan's, and we did meet the day after, or maybe two days after, with Kirk Titus, the tree warden, and he walked the whole road, pretty much, the whole road, and looked at every tree. It was very difficult, Suzanne was trying for every tree, and Kirk looked and said, "Oh, this one is not really structurally safe." But at the end, there was three good-sized maple trees that were really big, and they were structurally... Kirk thought, he kept saying, "He's a tree preservationist," so the other trees were definitely were gone. He said that three of them, if we trimmed them properly, they may have some more useful lives, so we agreed to, and he'll work with the company in terms of when we're trimming those three trees, we're going to try to save. So we have our mock those on plans. And then they asked if it's one smaller, I think an old dead ash tree that was close to the parking lot across from the Cotton Valley, like our own church, and we agreed to add that. So the total now is 20 trees.
Okay, very good.
Are any of those trees ash trees?
Yes. Many, did the ash are probably...
And if they have the yellowish-red color on them, they're basically toast?
These are more mature in terms of the ash borer decision talking about?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, because that indicates that the ash borer has attacked them.
I would have to refer to Kirk Titus. Did you call him saying anything about the ash borer? They've been hit by the plow, they've been banged up pretty bad, so these, I don't believe, are a result of the ash borer. We do have trees in town in different areas that is a major concern. These are specifically very old trees with limbs broken, and the ash were the weakest ones, and those are the ones we are taking out in addition to others.
I think the issue is that there are going to be no ash in Wolfboro in five years, based on the invasion of that pest.
That's a separation, but you're right.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Dave, do these plans reflect that 20 trees now are the... Originally, we're going to be 23 down, now they're only going to be 20 down. Are the trees that are not going to come down shown on these new plans that we have?
Yeah, they say, as they say.
So they're shown on the plans?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, Dave, thank you very much. I think we're pretty much set, and how would the board like to proceed with this public hearing? I'm sorry, Suzanne, sorry, go ahead.
Suzanne Ryan, Stonem Road. I assume the board has all received this letter from the...
Yes.
Regarding the signs. On a positive note, I would say that of the trees that are remaining, it appears that some of them have been pruned up, and so to give them a little longer life. And hopefully, we've all learned a lesson about trying to keep the plow, the wing away from the trees as much as possible. The issue I'd like to raise tonight is in reference to a letter that you got regarding the signage. I know, I think I know that David's pretty adamant about what he's got on the plan, but I am very disappointed with that. The 219 Master Plan, Natural Resource Section, the goal for scenic roads is what people see when they drive on Wolfboro's roads is important for visitors and residents. Quote, "We need to protect and maintain our scenic roads and vistas." The recommendation was to continue to implement the state road law, which you're doing tonight by way of the public hearing, and the town's scenic road policy. So, in 1997, there was a traffic survey done, and it was approximately 50 cars one-way or 100 cars round trip. When I look at... So, the point being that it's very sparsely traveled. When I look at College Road, I think some of you are familiar with College Road, there's one speed limit sign, and there's a double S curve going into the bridge over Willie Brook. There's no sign. So on College Road, there's one sign on the whole length of the road. And here, we're asking for, what is it, 18, total of 18 signs, something like that. Still too many. We don't want to see any more signs. Now, I checked with the police department to see how many accidents have been in the area, and there's none on Stonem Road, and there was one, I've got the report here, there's one on Cotton Mountain Road, I don't know if I can see the year. He did a 10-year search, and that accident was due to an animal that crossed in front of the car. All conditions were good, the driver was not impaired, so there are no accidents in 10 years in that neighborhood. I think, I don't know if anyone's going to read this letter out loud, but I like it into the report of Tite's meeting. If they took the time to write it, I would like to see it read, but it's not my job to read it. The main concern is not only the number of signs, but the number of signs that will be at the four ways, proposed four-way stop. And I think, well, I wish somebody would read the letter. I don't think it's beholden on me to read that letter. But I would end up by saying that I would request that the planning board support the master plan, to do their utmost to keep that road as scenic as possible. There's beautiful views off to the left-hand side over to Lake Winnipesaukee. I hate to see the sign clutter, and to continue to uphold the town scenic road policy, and request that you strongly request that there be reconsideration of the number of signs. Thank you.
I got a question. What are the signs beside the nine that you have? You have, says that of the nine, you have two speed limit, two town line, two tractor, two curve, and one slow children playing. What other signs do we know that are going to be added?
What are the signs what?
That are going to be added.
Well, you get it on your plan. Your plans show the signs.
Do you know, Dave, what other signs are going to be added?
I think we're already into the level, which is referring to stretched road in Brookfield going over, three miles from the other, comparing the rest of the roads that are on the local to the section additional, please, I believe that we leave that kind of...
Yeah.
So I think that's the plans, the whole set of plans. It shows that the signs that were proposed by the engineer. Reason we noticed, they passed the internal catch of the signs. This year, we have the engineer put the job on the business and get the points with typical standards. I have looked at her request, and I have looked at the kind of map condition. Sorry about that, so John, this day, answer the question about the signs. You have a letter that is referring to a stretched road from Brookfield going away from you, and they're comparing it to, and it compares, hey, we don't have any signs here, why do we need signs here? Just like Suzanne said, we don't need any signs. This is, you know, we think we're back in 1880s where we have horse buggies, we don't need to have any signs warning people who aren't from the area. Everyone there, and maybe out of 49 people, they all live there, and the one person who doesn't live there, there should be a speed limit sign. We, all we're doing is replacing one of the signs, Brookfield, we cannot replace it. We'll keep the rusted sign there to people that... The only signs we're really adding is a four-way stop sign, and I think Suzanne has some very good comments, I agree with her, we're going to make it just a two-way stop sign, so if you're coming up the hill, we'll not put a stop sign there because it's a hill, but you've got to have at least come in the other direction, stop signs there. So that's our agreement there, and I think we took out the two squiggly roadhead signs, I think we could agree with that. But there is one cautionary speed limit, because as you come into the steep, this narrow section with the guardrails, it's very, if a blind corner, and I think, and that's one of the gentlemen that was here who left earlier, he lives on that steep driveway, and again, just have a cautionary, say, "Slow down," you know, and we, so that was the other signs we added. So I don't think it's excessive, it's much more than the other streets, but, and I am cutting it back, like you said, to try to keep in line with it. But I do think the intent of the scenic roads is not signs, I think it is trees and stone walls, and I think it's not the jurisdiction to be ruling on that, but I'm more than happy to work with the paranoid authority team and the board on what we'd like to see.
So are you satisfied with that, Suzanne? Has Dave been good in working with you, sounds like it? Honestly?
What I think was being proposed was some S curve signs approaching.
Yeah.
There are, okay, good. So how many signs does that leave? One speed limit sign. No, Suzanne, you need to speak to us. Well, I didn't hear, I couldn't... Yeah, okay, all right. I'm trying to find out how many signs he's finally agreeing to leave... Okay. As opposed to what's there. All right.
Two stop signs, right now, there's a four-way intersection with no stop signs, so there's going to be two new stop signs. There's going to be one speed limit sign, there's going to be two cautionary speed limit signs, 20 on that very difficult corner. Be two, at the end, we can live with the two Brookfield, the town line signs, it goes on and get replaced, and the squiggly road signs are going to be taken off. So I think that's the total, so if it was only nine, we're going to have to have... So I'm not sure if he fully understood, if we do it, it's understanding intent, it's just a matter of having the best we can.
Yeah. I don't see the need for the cautionary slow down, there's a curve sign, it's very apparent when you're traveling over.
Well, he's already taken out a few other signs, so maybe it's an extreme case, and it may be needed in that one particular case. I think, you know, everybody's not going to get everything, we've just got to give and take a little bit along the way.
Well, I think I have, I've consented, agreed with reluctantly to like, you know, 18 trees coming down, so I think I've bent over backwards. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Okay, any other member of the public? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
A couple of questions, a couple of comments. Can I make sure that the letter to the Planning Board of April 19, 2021, signed by Eric Keim and Pamela McKittrick, is made part of the record of tonight's proceedings?
Absolutely, it'll be appended at the end of the public hearing portion of the minutes.
It'll be part of the record, it's available to the public as of this evening, or as soon as it gets posted. In addition, I think, in my opinion, Dave is right, this board doesn't have jurisdiction over road signs, that's a matter of traffic, health, and safety, it's outside of our jurisdiction. We don't have any expertise on traffic signs, whether they are appropriate or not appropriate for the area that they're planned on being put in, and if I read the statute correctly, our jurisdiction extends to trees and stone walls, it doesn't give us any authority or influence over road signs. I would like to make a statement that I think David Ford has bent over backwards in working with members of the public and Kirk Titus in looking at the trees that are on Stonem Road, and has done the best that can be done with reducing the number of trees that need to come down for his opinion of public safety. So I'd be happy to make a motion at this point regarding this application, if you want.
Okay, just let me just check, any other members? Okay, all right, then, go ahead, Mike.
I'd be happy to move to instruct the chairwoman to provide on behalf of the Planning Board, written consent to the Director of Planning, Public Works, to proceed with the plans to remove 20 trees from Stonem Road, as shown on the plans which are made part of this application.
Do we need to close the public hearing first?
Well, this isn't the same, but...
It's not an application, all we're doing is giving consent to the proposal, it's not like a regular application.
Isn't it 19?
Okay.
David told us 20.
Dave, can you confirm quickly, is it 20 trees that are coming down, or 19?
So, there were originally 22 trees, we saved three, that gives us 19. Suzanne requested additional ones, so it went back up to 20. So we added one new one that wasn't originally meant for, that's the one by the parking lot, and we saved three of the original 22. So it's 19 plus one, 20 trees have been cut, and the three are marked on the plan to stay saved, not to be cut.
Okay, so it is 20?
It is total 20.
Okay, so my motion can stand, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so total of 20, okay. Okay, I'll second the motion. Anyone other comments? Okay, then we'll go ahead and vote. Everybody in favor of the scenic road reconstruction plan presented this evening, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, all right, thank you very much, Dave. Okay, see you later.
Bye, Dave.
Okay, all right, we're now going to have the discussion with the Heritage Commission, and, yes?
Sorry to be a stickler. Was Julie made an alternate for this evening, or made a voting member in Vaughn's absence?
Yes, she can be.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Yes, I accept.
Okay. All right, okay, so the charrette discussion with the Heritage Commission, want to come on up, folks, so we can see what we've got here? Okay, hi, Maggie.
Hi, Maggie Steer for the Heritage Commission.
Okay.
I'm joined here by Suzanne Ryan and Blodgett Bronzetti, all members of the Heritage Commission. We met two weeks ago and unanimously agreed that we would recommend moving forward with the charrette in September in a hybrid model that was presented by Plan New Hampshire at the last Planning Board meeting.
Okay.
If it's required, if it's not, then, you know, some other modification that would be appropriate for safe carrying out of this event.
Okay, and so this is still scheduled for the 24th and the 25th of September?
That's the tentative date, but the hybrid model could draw it out to be a whole week. The time that the team would be on-site would be only one night, Friday night, the 24th.
Okay.
And other public participation opportunities would be done virtually.
Okay. Okay, can you describe that a little, since I wasn't here?
Oh, I thought you might have seen it or heard minutes.
No.
I read the minutes. Gosh, Kathy, do you want me to start with what the whole charrette is about?
No, no, just explain how this is going to work virtually.
Well, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but some of the public inputs, there would be, the team would assemble and visit the site in person, and then the public input sessions would take place virtually.
Okay.
And I believe there would also be in-person options for that.
Okay.
Typically, they would do the walk-around Friday morning with public input Friday afternoon and Friday evening. There will be opportunities instead, I think, the preceding week.
Okay.
So probably one daytime and one evening, but they don't all have to take place in one day.
Okay.
Giving much more opportunity for people to participate.
Okay, all right, very good.
And a lot of that seems to be in flux, because we're not sure where the world is going to be by the time September rolls around. If everything is functionally back to normal, it may be a very traditional seeming charrette, with the advent of some additional hybrid sessions or virtual sessions.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that seems to make sense. Okay, Planning Board members?
I have a small question. We talked about the fact that we were not under contract with Plan New Hampshire, that all of that had kind of run out. Did we ever get any information back as to new contracts?
Well, it's not a new contract, what I understood is they were going to put together, once there was a decision on a date, they were going to put together information explaining what the timeline would look like based on that model.
They're holding a place for us, Julie, if that's your concern.
I was kind of more interested in the dollar figure and that sort of thing, as to how that compared to what was before.
There's been no talk that I've heard of about the dollar figure changing. More specifically, increasing.
I think that's true. The Heritage Commission proposed this charrette over a year ago. We volunteered to take care of the logistics, and our most pressing concern right now is getting lodging squared away.
Right.
Because it's very difficult in September, most places have a 2-night minimum. We do have the Wentworth, what's it called, Dan? The Wentworth Inn.
Okay.
The former Alany, Lake Wentworth Inn, will give us a one-night rate, and they've been very generous, but they do need an answer very soon.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, any other, go ahead, Mike.
Hi, Maggie, I'd like to echo what Julie said. If we were costed out on the basis of an in-person charrette last year, and now we're looking at more than likely a virtual charrette in some degree or another, it doesn't seem to me the two costs should be identical, since the two projects are not identical. So I'm a little bit concerned there, but more to the point, yet nonetheless related to the way the charrette is to be run, is I'm not sure a virtual charrette is, I hate to say the word "worth" doing, because I know you guys have a lot of effort built into this, but I've sat on a lot of boards, and I've done a lot of virtual meetings, and it's really, really, really hard to get what you say across, sometimes people can't hear. It's really difficult to talk on a screen to another person who's on the screen, there's no body language going on, there's no time to converse backwards and forwards. It seems to me to be a hamstrung process, and I wonder if we waited another year for this to be over, could we not have an in-person charrette and not have to deal with the virtual problem?
I hear your concerns, Mike. We all know how difficult it is to have meetings over Zoom, and to feel heard, and to have a sense of teamwork. In this case, we're going to have a dozen consultants who will do the bulk of the work, and I think we have an opportunity to hear from our citizens over a longer period of time that will only benefit the process. We can, if we decide now, we can begin to start talking about the reasons for the charrette, and how to connect downtown to Wolfboro Falls area, enhancing pedestrian, making use of underused or vacant buildings, and really begin to have a dialogue over the course of the next couple of months, so that when the team does get to town, they will have the benefit of knowing that people in town really are familiar with this, and they aren't just hearing of it on a Friday, and then suddenly there's a presentation of recommendations for possible solutions to consider on the very next day. So I really think the hybrid model and this longer lead time and broader opportunity for input is a real plus in this case. And again, the consultants will be working together, they'll be doing the drawings, they'll be compiling statistics, they'll be walking the site and talking about alternatives, all in an in-person format.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Anne.
I went on, can I take this off the talk? I went online today, and projected vaccination rates are, for July, are looking at like 70% to 80% of adults. So by September, the projections are that we're going to, you know, most kids are going to get there, you know, that are eligible and so forth. So I think the time is right to do this, it's been in the hopper even more than a year, I think, Maggie, maybe two, and there are things going on over there that would be facilitated by this charrette going on this fall. So we have held the hotel rooms, logistically, you know, either way, I think it's going to bring maximum value in Wolfboro. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
I'll just keep going if I may. Two other questions for Maggie. When Plan New Hampshire was here on the 16th of March, they promised that they would send us the results of their hybrid charrette that they were running in Tilton. I've not seen that. I wonder if you have, and how did that charrette work out under those conditions?
Travis, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was scheduled for the beginning of June.
That's correct. I don't know if Plan New Hampshire has any resolution yet in Tilton.
They told us at the time that it was scheduled for 3/21, March of '21, doing a hybrid at Tilton this month. And then our question was, we needed to see how much virtual was involved in that charrette. Just, that's on my notes from the March 16th meeting.
Okay, well, I have not heard from Robin, and clearly the Planning Board hasn't either. They were dealing with the vaccination rate at the time of their charrette. As Anne pointed out, it should be very different in September. And I have great confidence in their ability to adapt the format, to adjust to the changing conditions.
Could I ask you to get in touch with them and ask them if they have run their charrette in Tilton, and if so, what the results were?
I would be happy to do that.
And one other question. Since the charrette was proposed last year, there have been changes in the actual disposition and also the planned disposition of some of the buildings that were going to be involved in the charrette. The electric generation building has now got a Girl Scouts proposal attached to it. The railroad shed is now part of Mr. Sims's project, and that's active. I'm wondering if those, and the Sunell Building, I believe, has got something going on in it. If those changes change at all the parameters for the charrette?
Well, when we proposed the charrette, the future of the freight building was not certain. And it does seem like the Railroad Museum is moving along quite nicely. But I also think that the larger issue is really connecting downtown to Lainer Street and along the rail trail, so that there's greater walkability and use of those buildings in such a way that we are more cohesive as a community and make it easier for people to get from one place to the other and enjoy the historic resources in that area. The Girl Scouts won a statewide preservation award for their advocacy for reuse of that building, but I don't think anyone would say that their proposal is what we ought to take to the
Understood.
To the bid process.
But they have to be acknowledged.
Well, of course they do, and the feasibility study has to be carried out.
Right.
That hasn't been done yet either. So with architects, landscape architects, traffic professionals, planning professionals, I think we'll have a tremendous amount of expertise at our disposal to give us some ideas for how we might revision this part of our community. And we can take it or leave it. There's nothing that says we have to adopt those recommendations. And I think that's a really key part of the charrette. It's just a visioning session. And the team has the skills to put those visions on paper, to share with their community. That can be a very exciting outcome of this planning process, because I think if people see drawings or they read the report and understand the thoughts and ideas from some of these professionals that we're basically getting at no cost, it can really spark some very creative planning for the future. And that's all it really is.
Right.
But I also think it's a real community-building process, and I've seen that work to the advantage of towns as they're tackling some tough growth problems.
Right, and when we submitted this plan, I mean, we knew that these various projects were taking place, and so we went ahead anyway, based on the thoughts that you just expressed.
But that's another reason why I'm in favor of moving ahead now, because if we wait another year, then the processes will be further down the road, decisions will be made, and maybe there won't be any chance to consider how they all connect.
Yes, exactly. Okay, go ahead, Peter.
One last question. Could we, could the board ask the planner to confirm the pricing on the charrette, given the changed circumstances from an in-person to a partial hybrid?
Well, guess I'll get specifically to the answer in a minute. The morning after the last planning board discussion on this, there was an email from Robin. "We would recommend that on the 20th, the decision whether to go forward is made based on the application or the revised application." By revised, he's referring to the addition of the hybrid inclusion. Assuming in the positive at that time, the revised application, or if no changes, the original, will be forwarded to us, they will indicate, we need to indicate a choice of dates. Application will be reviewed, with or without revisions. We may request a meeting to discuss any questions we may have or that come out of the planning board discussion. We will respond with an MOU to confirm the dates, a checklist of what the town needs to provide to them, and a statement of their deliverables as well. And I will include therewith a reminder that the town has $6,000 appropriated for this project. So if they are proposing something that modifies that number, we may need to revise the date. But again, $6,000 is the amount the town has to spend without appropriating any other. So what I have heard through all of the conversations with Robin and Maggie, et cetera, is they are willing to come for the agreed-upon price and make some modifications to allow for alternate attendance. I can't see how additional time, additional formats, additional anything is going to hamper a process as outlined in the original charrette. What I'm hearing, and this is just my observation tonight, is it seems, there seems to be concern, like the Planning Board is appropriating monies or pulling the trigger on something that, you're just, essentially, I see it as the Planning Board receiving a product from a charrette product. You know, it's not the Planning Board authorizing the charrette or the Planning Board agreeing to do a charrette. Everything's been set in motion to do the charrette, and the monies have been appropriated. And it seems the people that originally asked for the charrette are satisfied with the product that they would, had requested. So I guess I'm missing the hesitation on moving forward with the charrette based on what I've heard so far. Understanding that everyone anticipates a charrette to be 100% in-person and everyone is, you know, arms around one another, looking at the drawings. But I think, I don't think that would happen, even if everyone was 100% vaccinated this year. Just my two cents.
From my point of view, Travis, it's, the analogy would be, I've ordered a Mercedes, and now I have been told that all that's available are Fords, but the price is the same. What I'd like to know is, am I getting the same bang for that $6,000 worth of taxpayer money that I was going to get last year if COVID hadn't shown up? That's my concern.
I understand.
And if you can answer that question, then on Maggie's and the Heritage Commission's assurances that this is a good idea and they ought to go forward, I have no concerns. But my worry is, are we getting the same bang for the buck? And I'd like to have some way of feeling comfortable about that. And that money has not been spent. We have agreed to do a charrette. We have a price, we have appropriated $6,000. I don't know whether we have agreed that we will spend $6,000 on this project with them. If we have, then we have a contract, and in that case, we have to go through with it.
Well, we, what we have is a purchase order securing the $6,000 from the 2020 budget to be available for paying Plan New Hampshire for a charrette up to $6,000. So it's not a contract per se.
That's, that's fine. Then I really think that it would be helpful to know before we go into the process about what they think it's likely to cost us up to the $6,000. That's how I would run it.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Peter.
Peter.
I would suggest that, you know, if we are at a vaccination rate of 80%, the amount, which is going to be virtual, is going to be somewhat minimal. And so I would suggest that the return on the investment is going to be similar to a non-COVID situation. The other thing that I would, I think we might consider is that there are changes in ownership and plans for some of the buildings in this area. And they may actually be useful for the charrette, because they're going to bring into focus the things which are changing and how they're changing. And therefore, those modifications of those buildings may be important for us to look at and therefore see how things are changing. So I think that that may actually be a very good thing for us to have happen. And so I think it's a, it's a good thing.
Okay. Okay, well, and you said that you need to firm up the rooms by Thursday, right? Yeah, okay. Okay, then, does somebody want to make a motion that we move ahead with the planning of the charrette?
May I just say one more thing? Because Mike Hodder asked for information from Plan New Hampshire. I will do my darndest to get a response from Plan New Hampshire tomorrow.
You can, you can forget that request, Maggie. It looks as if the,
Okay.
momentum is going in a different direction.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But I do have a question. What exactly are we making a motion to do? Spend $6,000?
No, I think that decision has already been made, I think.
Well, there was an application to Plan New Hampshire that came back with a price and an agreement to do a charrette for $6,000, and that money was secured from '20 into '21. So I think if you want to make it a formal motion, it could be that the Planning Board is supportive of moving forward with Plan New Hampshire in 2021 on the schedule as outlined in the contract and further coordinated with Plan New Hampshire. And in the meantime, we will work out the details on what rooms, what days, firm up the price, and be able to report back when those things are solidified with Plan New Hampshire and hospitality.
Okay.
And frankly, I think it's up to everyone in this room to make sure, you know, if the Mercedes is the analogy we want to use, it's up to all of us to make sure that people show up regardless of format to get the Mercedes. It's as much work on our end as it is on Plan New Hampshire's end.
Okay. All right, well, then, I'll make a motion to move ahead with the charrette as described at the planning board meeting in March.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, everyone in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right. Okay, so off you go.
Hurry, hurry now.
And, and you folks need to stay in touch with us. I think we need to probably meet a little bit more often, now that the time is getting closer here. So, okay. Okay. All right, very good. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, all right. Okay, the next item, our reports from the various committees. So if we could have a report from the Stormwater Regulation Committee, of which I missed a meeting.
Didn't miss a meeting. And at that meeting, Brad and I reviewed a fresh document from Travis to prepare for Stormwater Reg's planning board review. So I think we're prepared to set a meeting now. Go ahead.
Well, in going over those minutes just before this meeting, I realized that the two of you had made a motion to bring it to this meeting for a first read. But I made the unofficial determination, based on how much was going on to this meeting, that perhaps move to the first meeting in May. And perhaps the committee want to meet again, or, I'll leave that to the committee. But the committee either meet again, or I can meet with Kathy, who missed the last meeting, to go over the draft language, so that at least the full committee has an understanding of the language before it comes back here.
I would give my confidence to Travis, that he could review Kathy.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's, that's fine. I don't see the need for another meeting at this point until.
Yeah, I agree. Keep bringing up speed.
Okay. All right, so is that okay with you, Travis?
That's fine. You and I will just set up a time offline.
Okay, very good. Okay, and drive-through.
What are you looking at me for? Drive-through restaurant meeting will be in May 3rd. I forget the time at the library. The afternoon, is it? If it's one o'clock at the afternoon on the 3rd. We ran into, as I'm sure you remember from the last report, a problem that we were not able to reach the public with notice regarding the public forum on the issue in the way we had planned, through a mailing with the electric department's bills. So we're going to have to rethink how we do this. But the plans to have a public forum on the issue in June, is it? Are still on the table. Just a question of how we get that information out, what we say in that information, and who's going to do the writing of the informational pieces. Basically, a,
I think it was July 8th.
Yeah, we're striving.
July 8th for the public forum, correct? July 8th?
July is the forum, yeah. The forum is scheduled for July. And just a question now of how we, how we get the information out to the public, what we tell you about the forum, and how we gather as many people in as we possibly can to talk about the issue. We're making no proposals. We simply want to hear from the public.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Thank you.
All right. Filterbed Road. John, you were chairing that. Why don't you go ahead?
Yep, yep. The Filterbed Road met on 4/8, and we reconfigured our new group with three new members. And we came up with a direction for comparison for uses in the Bay Street Limited District and the Pine Hill Road Development District. And we have some maps and so forth. We are having an April 26th meeting at 4th at 5:00 in the Great Hall here. And that's,
22nd? 22nd?
No, April 22nd, yes. Not this week?
You said 26.
Thursday, 8:00 in the morning.
Yeah, Thursday.
I heard him say 26, not 22nd. Okay.
22nd.
Okay, 8:00.
8:00 a.m.
A.m.
5:00 p.m.
8:00 a.m.
Okay, so are we all, all set then?
That's, that's that one. I'm sorry. I got my other, my lighting one was April 26th, sorry. Got a bunch of them here looking at my notes.
I was having the same problem doing the agendas for that, so.
Lighting was last night, John.
No, it wasn't.
Okay, all right, so Filterbed Road is moving along.
Yeah, new, new, new information. We're just, we're just chinning up a conversation right now and basically trying to bring things together. We, you know, we want to hear everybody's input, and everybody has good ideas on how we should look at the area.
Okay, very good. Okay, lighting, John?
Yep, the lighting committee will, will have a new document for review. And Travis is going to make a couple tweaks and give that back to us, I do believe. is gonna make a couple tweaks and give that back to us, I do believe. And then we're gonna give that to the planning board for their viewing, and I do believe that is April 26th.
Okay, the, the next meeting is April...
Yeah, 4/30. And that's something that we've been finalizing and getting things down, and at that point, the public will be able to see the document and weigh in on, on anything that they think is, needs addressing.
Okay, all right. Okay, short-term rental, let's see, we're meeting the first Monday in May, I, I think. And I, I think pretty much what we've decided to do is to try and figure out how we can get all of these rentals sort of modified so, so that they have to sign up to something. And we, we would then have control over who is renting and who is not going to rent. So, so that's kind of what Tavis is looking at right now. Tavis, do you have any, any other information since we talked last about the special, special...
No, not, not at this time, no.
What was that?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
I have a comment. We've just decided that, in my opinion, in the last meeting, that there will be some regulation necessary and being done regarding short-term rentals. What regulation that is has not been determined yet.
Right.
That's, that's as far as we've gotten.
Right, that's right. We're just talking about it right now.
Correct.
Yes, exactly.
But there will be some, some type of regulation happening.
Right. Yeah, go, go ahead.
Madam Chairwoman, when the short-term rental subcommittee was set up, it was set up specifically to see whether there was a problem. It was not designed, in my opinion, and in my recollection, to propose solutions to a problem. It was designed to see whether there was a problem in the first place, report back to the planning board, yes, there is, no, there isn't, and let the planning board decide what was going to happen. I did not remember that this subcommittee was commissioned to come up with proposals for regulation of short-term rentals because this entire board has never considered that issue. So that's, that's my understanding. I don't think I'm incorrect. I was instrumental in getting this thing organized. So I am a little bit concerned that the, the remit of the short-term rental subcommittee has gotten away with it. And I suggest, I would be happier personally if the committee stuck to the original commission, which was just to see how many are there out there? Is there a problem? Are neighbors upset? Are neighbors not upset? Are people making money? Are people not making money? What's having an impact on the town, et cetera? And thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, well, that's fine, but they're still looking at the regulation and whether it's possible or not.
I thought that was our job.
That's what the, the purpose of, of looking at is.
I thought that it was this board's job to look to see whether regulation was necessary, and that the subcommittee's job was to find out the facts.
Okay, well, that's what we're trying to do. Go ahead, Peter.
Well, should we at this time then change the charge to that particular committee to make possible recommendations?
Well, I, I think it's a little premature at this point in time.
Okay.
Because they're, they're still trying to determine whether we want to go this route. They still want to hear from other neighborhood associations as to how people are dealing with it themselves and things of that nature. So I don't think anything really has, has been decided that...
I, I thought I was sort of responding to Mike's issue that, or Mike's question that, you know, we don't want to have these recommendations, any recommendations made based on what they're discovering. And I would just say that it would be a logical step to me to have the group that is looking into this say, these are the problems, these might be recommendations or solutions. They aren't, you know, they aren't doing it formally, but they're just sort of suggesting that this is something which might be done.
Yes, and, and that is what, what actually what they're...
So is that, is that okay with you, Mike?
The composition of the committee as established was designed to look into the problem, to see whether there was a problem or not. So the expertise on that committee was balanced carefully. If that committee is now to be commissioned to go further than what I thought it was and to look into whether regulations were necessary or not, then I would suggest that that committee's constituency needed to be reestablished.
At the same time, any recommendation which comes out of that committee has to be approved by the planning board, so therefore, they could say that, you know, you can only rent something if you have flying pigs in the area, and we'd say, no, that's not true. So we don't have to accept any of their recommendations as a planning board.
I understand that, but I'm just, I'm, and I don't want to belabor the issue because I think I am, but I am concerned that the remit of the subcommittee has become extended beyond what I thought it was originally intended to be. I may be the only one on this board who feels that way, but I do feel that way strongly.
Okay, go ahead, Susan. So, based on the feedback that we've gotten with public input during our short-term rental meetings, are there problems? Yes. Are people, renters, making money? Yes. Is it impacting the town in a good way and in a bad way? Yes. The answer to all those questions is yes. So I guess we can say that it is the recommendation of the short-term rental committee that we form some type of regulation. But you're right, it, it is not their jurisdiction to form those regulations. That is probably a planning board responsibility, am I correct?
Oh, yeah, it would be a planning board responsibility. All right, I'll withdraw my concerns. I'll just sit tight and see what happens.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Okay, so that meeting is May 3rd at 10:00 AM, and basically, the short-term rental is... Tavis?
I was just going to offer for the board, the short-term rental committee purpose statement as authored 224-2020, if the board would like to hear that.
Sure.
The purpose of the planning board's short-term rental committee is as follows. These are in bullets. Differentiate between short-term and long-term rentals. Study the trend of short-term rentals. Determine the impact of short-term rentals may have on the town government, comma, community, comma, and property owners. Determine if this use leads to commercialism of residential neighborhoods. Determine the impact on the quality of life in Wolfboro. Uphold the integrity of the zoning ordinance. Make recommendations to the Board of Selectment and Planning Board on regulatory or policy changes necessary after study.
So this is the purpose statement that I see referenced in the, hold on, let me, bear with me. In the short-term rental committee minutes...
Well, it's when we started that...
Of 224-20.
Yes.
That was a short, that was a short-term rental subcommittee's remit to itself.
Correct. Kathy Barnard reviewed the draft committee purpose statement dated January 27, 2020. Peter Cook requested a clarification on capital T-town versus lowercase t-town in the purpose statement. It was clarified that both should be included. Peter Cook noted that making recommendations to the planning board and Board of Selectment, though considered to be within the scope of the committee, is not included in the purpose statement as presented. The subcommittee agreed by consensus to include that in a revised purpose statement to be provided to the committee. So that is the purpose statement I just read was the result of...
I'm not meaning to be argumentative, but the only body that can give a remit to a subcommittee is the commissioning committee. And the subcommittee can't commission its own self without approval of its parent committee. But this is becoming a dead horse. I don't want to feed it anymore.
You are being argumentative, and now let's go to John.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
So the, the current status of the short-term rental committee is, we, we have heard from the fire and police, and we've heard from the public on, on a couple different occasions. And we've heard from Airbnb owners, and we've heard of instances where other towns have, have voted on regulations. And basically, we're taking the first step, and we're trying to define what a short-term rental is. So that's our first approach, and whether or not we regulate, we, there's a, there's many, a host of many ways to regulate. It's how the committee wants to come up with any suggestions to the planning board on how we want to do that. So everybody seems very involved in the committee and wants to work this problem. Some, the majority say, yes, we do see a problem, and how do we fix it? And some of the problems are not the same problems that everybody looks at, but everybody sees a different problem with a different solution, and we have to come together and, and get along.
Right, okay, thank you. And thank you to other board members who have more articulately described the situation than I'm able to right now. So, okay, so, so that's where we are right now with short-term rental. Back to Peter's suggestion that we change the, the focus. I, I think we probably just want to go along in our own way of doing it right now without making any decisions. Go ahead.
Okay, so I just have a question. So the, the committee will be coming up with a recommendation, and then it will be the planning board's decision as to how to regulate? Am I correct?
Uh, yes.
We, we would be making any recommendations, basically. That's all we're doing is just making recommendations.
And then the planning board makes the decision on how to...
Yes, right.
Just clarifying.
Yeah, okay. All right, very good. Okay, so that pretty much takes care of the committee reports that are ongoing right now. Okay, could we now have a discussion about the subdivision regulations? Tavis, you had put together something for us to, to review before this meeting, and do you mind going through that?
Sure. I'm assuming that everyone has read it, and you just nod as to whether you've read it or not. I mean, the, the basic takeaway for those that don't have a copy of it in front of them is that the conservation subdivision regulations, which are an option to anyone proposing a subdivision, but they become required if you're of a certain lot size or have a minimum lot size with a certain parent lot size before you start the subdivision. And long story short, basically, the way the regulations are written is there's a very arduous regimen of regulations posed to someone looking at doing a conservation subdivision, but what I can't see is an incentive for someone to do it, nor do I see any greater protection to the natural resources that I believe are the inherent nature of the conservation subdivision to provide. And that's broken out in more detail in the memo. Also in that memo are a couple of illustrations. When you look at the illustrations and you look at the spreadsheet that I put together for you, you actually net less open space with the conservation subdivision regulations you have than you would under a traditional subdivision. It seems nonsensical to think of it that way, but what you do in a conservation subdivision is you essentially set half of it aside and then allow the total parent lot density on half the lot. When you take a traditional subdivision and you put in, the illustration I showed was a 1,200 by 100-foot lot. And if you break it up into four equal pieces of 300 by 100, and then you subtract the setbacks from each one, and you add in the applicable lot coverage restrictions that are already in the zoning ordinance, you've already protected more land than the conservation subdivision is protecting. And I don't think that was the intent of the regulations. Typically, when people do a conservation subdivision, you may allow the same density, or you may make provisions for a density bonus where the open space developed into a public park or a trail system or provides connectivity between trails or parks or public street improvements, all depending on what the parent parcel is. None of that is really built into these conservation subdivisions. There is a section that talks about a density bonus, but there's lots of "may" language, and it only adds 10%. But if you add 10% density to regulations that are already a net loss in open space from traditional subdivision, I'm not sure how the board could argue for giving the density bonus. And that density bonus, when you look at the language in the regulation, it's tied specifically to those things determined by the board, not defined in the regulations, but determined by the board to be critical environmental areas. And I'm not saying that sarcastically to be a jerk, but critical to Kathy may be different than critical to Julie, or Brad, or John, or Susan. So the board then collectively comes up with this definition of what critical is for a particular situation to perhaps apply density. Again, you're allowing less open space to be created than a traditional subdivision would provide. So hopefully, the analysis makes sense. Writing it up didn't make much sense, so I put together the photo, the illustration to depict the point, and if the illustration didn't work, I put the spreadsheet together for those that are mathematically inclined, which, which I am not, but I couldn't believe once I put the picture together that it was actually working. So I put the math with it to prove it. So I'm basically looking for a recommendation from the planning board as how you'd like to proceed. The original question that was voiced to me was, why is no one doing this? And when you read it, I essentially say, well, why would they slash, why would we want them to? One of the benefits, and I will admit this, one of the benefits to the conservation subdivision is that it currently requires a certain amount of open space to be in a conservation easement. But that's a very expensive add-on for some subdivisions. It doesn't provide much tolerance for something other than a conservation easement. So once you get into conservation easement, now you have an attorney involved, you have deeds involved, and you have everyone under the sun basically signing off on it in perpetuity, which suggests, I mean, logically, that makes sense if the goal is to make it in perpetuity. A conservation easement is the way to go, but you already cannot build on your setbacks. One of the other interesting areas is the number of exemptions. There are lots of ways to ask the planning director to make a determination if there's an exemption from the conservation subdivision. So there are easy ways, easy is not a helpful word. There are prescriptive ways to exempt yourself from the regulations by simply agreeing not to subdivide it in the future. Any of the, so if you come in and say, I'm only going to do four lots, and I'm going to write on the plan, I, you know, none of these lots can be subdivided. That's a perfectly good intent. I would suggest in that case, the information needs to say, it needs to be marked on the plan, and it needs to be in every resultant deed upon transfer. Does that make sense to anyone? Because if you don't put it in the deed, and it only says it on the plan, the statutory way to amend something off a plan is to come back to a later planning board with a new plan. So the only way to make that binding is either conservation easement or put it in the deed. So there are ways for the board to achieve its goal, perhaps better than the current regulations offer. And if that's something the board would like me to cost out, if you will, what would the regulations look like to achieve the following goals? I'm happy to do that, but I think it's a board discussion of where to go and separate from the original question that I was asked.
I think it's, I'm sorry, go ahead. I think it's, I think you, I think the two questions are related. I think your analysis shows, essentially leads us to the answer to the question that we originally proposed to you. There is a problem. The regulation is not being utilized the way the board, when it set it up, hoped it would be. I agree with you that it is heavy on the regulation, as you say in your analysis. There is not much in the way of incentive to do one of these things. I'm reluctant to give up the possibility of getting a conservation easement. So if, and I would, I would argue for a planner to revise the conservation subdivision regulation in a way that would preserve the possibility for conservation easements as restrictions in deeds, but at the same time, provide some kind of incentive to developers to create something like this that will be used in the future. And that, if you want, as a motion, that's a motion.
I have a comment, and I am, I'm very aware of one particular development which was done with conservation easements. And this particular development must have found benefit to it. At the same time, I would suggest that the property which has been put into conservation easement is virtually all areas which are wetland, and therefore not buildable. And so this particular development ended up getting advantage by putting property into conservation easement which couldn't have been built on anyway. And so therefore, it is a situation that is, you know, they took benefit, but it was going to be done that way anyway. And now it also turns out that the Conservation Commission is supposedly responsible for maintaining these properties. I don't think they're doing it well because there are little properties that are just here, there, and everywhere.
So there are models out there, for example, that say, start with the parent lot. You put a, hypothetically, pick a number, a 50-foot no-cut buffer inward of the property line for the full perimeter. Then from that area, remove any sensitive lands or areas that cannot obtain a building permit, you know, absent a special use permit, or wetland fill permit, or what have you. So any wetlands, or water courses, or very poorly drained, et cetera. All of that comes out. Then you have a subset of the original parcel. That is then used to determine the yield of the parcel, and then the applicant works with the planning board to best locate the density on that parcel within the buildable area of the parcel. So essentially, the planning board is taking on the entire parcel as, how do we protect this based on the, I'll say, the net land area yield to be the least environmentally invasive? Perhaps that includes a bonus. And then, the options to protect it could be permanently reserved open space, could be conservation easement, could be otherwise, but essentially, the planning board is looking at a subdivision like a site plan review. So where do the residences go? One of the things I also found a little cumbersome in the regulations was there was no acknowledgement or anti-acknowledgement, if you will, of individual property lines within the conservation subdivision. So you could have an inherently better design in certain environmental contexts by allowing attached structures. So two or three-unit structures, or a cluster of smaller structures, or condominium-type footprints, if you will, so that everyone had individual ownership and/or affordable ownership and/or what have you, while being as context-sensitive as possible. And that would be welcomed by developers. It would be welcomed by the community, because you're ostensibly looking at shorter roads, looking at the least invasive project. And I'm happy to put some language together that gets in that vein, if that's where the board perhaps thought the regs were, or would like the regs to be.
That's actually a rather exciting suggestion.
Yeah, the thing that I was concerned about was that, you said our conservation subdivision is in the ordinance.
Correct.
And the subdivision is-
Well, that was-
Within the subdivision, and I thought, hmm.
That was the next big hurdle. One of the, I mean, if we want to go 21st century, the planning board might want to consider this as a model that's available to any subdivision.
Right.
Instead of saying, well, no, you're in the zone. You have to have one-acre lots, and 300 feet of frontage, and this, and this, and this. What if somebody wanted to say, look, if I do a traditional subdivision, I get five houses? I can meet everything. But what I'd like to do is put five units on this acre over here, and leave the rest open. I think the planning board should be supportive of that.
Yeah.
Or at least listen to-
Or, I would submit, the planning board could be supportive of that. I don't want to prejudge any application that hasn't been-
I'd like to see some maps and spreadsheets showing me how that would actually work.
Sure.
Yes, I think the next step that we need to see is to have some sort of a definition of how this would work.
I anticipated something slightly different. So something I'm actually working on is, if you look at the spreadsheet, I called out the particular zones in the lot coverages. You'll notice one of the residential zones isn't listed, because once you get to the, I believe it's the rural agriculture, there is no maximum lot coverage percentage. You know, in-town, it's 30%, rural residential, it's 20%, but once you get to the big lots, I think it actually really works against the board, because you can flood the whole, you can cover 100% of the area inside the setbacks, which I don't think is the intent of that zone. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So currently, in the village residential, let's just say it's a minimum half-acre zone, and you need 300 feet of frontage, and then you take a 30-foot front, setback, and 20 off the sides and rear. You can only fill 30% of the area inside the setback line. But once you get out to the rural agriculture, you're in much larger zones, but there's no maximum lot coverage percentage.
Okay.
So you can cover 100% of everything inside, I mean, assuming you can handle stormwater, but, you know. So where I was going with that is, one consideration is to add a maximum lot coverage, question mark, I don't know the number, in the rural agriculture, but also to look at how many parcels currently qualify under the mandatory conservation subdivision. Gee, there's this table in the ordinance that says, if you start with 50 acres and the minimum lot size is three, you have to comply. How many 50-acre lots are left? How many 100-acre lots are left? So it might be time to revamp the regulations anyway, but I'm going to be including that in recommendations moving forward.
Okay, all right. Any other thoughts, comments? Okay. Well, yeah, go ahead.
We lived in one of those subdivisions in Lincoln, Massachusetts, which was a pioneering town in that kind of zoning. The wildlife corridor, the lack of disruption with roads and the tract-style housing, the view lines we had from our house, we were, one of our acres was in the open space, and we had one acre in a two-acre zoning area. And it was, it really made Lincoln, if you've ever driven through Lincoln, Massachusetts, they are frequent in Lincoln, and the woods and the open spaces are spectacular. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Tavis, you're going to keep moving on this?
Yes.
All right, very good.
Little side project, yep.
Yeah, okay, all right. Very good. Okay, the next item is the streets and access. When we passed the parking ordinance for the zoning regulations in March, we took out some of the changes from the streets and access, and the next part of the project is to include it in the site plan regulations. So this document that you have before you is a, the first look at the change that would take place.
Just for the benefit of the group, the last time you saw this, it was in the strikeout, you know, tract changes version, as it was moving to town meeting for the zoning regulation portion of it. What I didn't, what I did was accept all of the tract changes, and then show this way in this document as the change to the site plan regulations. So if the board is okay with this, I would submit you are, because you've already agreed to this language in your hearing prior to town meeting. Unless you would like to revise it again, I would recommend you set it for public hearing for your May, drum roll please, just waiting for the calendar. May 18th.
May 18th? Okay, so does anybody have any changes?
My only comment is that the idea that off-site parking space is located within 500 feet of the site, to me, ends up being a very, very strange thing, because in that 500 feet, there may be 10 different businesses, all claiming the same sites. At the same time, it states here that people seem to be able to find parking places in Wolfboro, and so apparently, it's not as much of a problem. But when you read that, it just is, it's like, I can claim it, and you can claim it, and everybody can claim the same parking place, and it doesn't make sense, but, you know, but it's, it works.
Logically, it doesn't make sense, because everyone thinks that if there's a parking problem, the solution is to add parking. What I've always had the greatest success with, which is why I was happy to see where this is going personally, is that often, the best solution to a parking problem is to reduce the number of parking spaces, because it forces people to look and invest in the other options, so they're willing to start paying more attention to sidewalks, and being willing to pay for sidewalk improvement, sidewalk amenities, bus stops, bike racks. And there's a lot of, you know, because there's many sections in the master plan that talk about a complete streets model. Now, there's the by-definition complete streets, but there's all the things that go with a complete community, as I look at it. And when parking is not the dominant feature in your downtown, people start paying attention to everything else, and I think it actually works. So, that's my soapbox.
Okay.
Do you want a motion to move this to public hearing?
I just, I have one other comment, and that-
Okay.
It, I have a recollection of a year or so ago, maybe two years ago, one new establishment was going to, you know, occur and enlarge, and they spent a whole lot of time counting the number of parking spaces within 500 feet of their establishment. And it may end up being that that, the expense of making those accountings by some engineer might be reduced in some way. It just seemed like they spent a whole lot of time, we spent a whole lot of time discussing it, and it just seemed to be an arcane method of dealing with things.
They were crossing Ts and dotting Is in the hopes of getting a planning board approval for-
Correct.
-site plan review, and more power to them if they want to spend the money and take the time. The regulation, which will go into site plan review, simply allows them to say, yep, within 500 feet, there are-
Right.
And I'm sure we got enough, so everything is cool. Do you want a motion to move this to public hearing?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right. The next item on the agenda is the public comment.
Catch them quick.
And, yes.
They all said goodnight.
So much for that. Okay, let's see, the only other item on the agenda is the draft minutes from-
So, Madam Chairman, if I may, the advertised agenda that was on the website has the correct minutes. For some reason, your packet has an earlier draft of the minutes. That's why I brought everyone up a copy of the corrected minutes.
Oh, okay, all right, well, that was-
So there, I imagine there were any number of concerns over particular votes, and the ayes and nays on certain items in those minutes, but they are correctly reflected in what you have in front of you now in the packet, which is the advertisement.
Okay, well, did everybody get the corrected minutes?
Yep, I brought everyone up a copy this evening.
Okay. All right, so you're saying that the correction, oh, oh, yeah. Okay, all right, well, the, one concern that I had was the vote from the last amendment. And that has been corrected, okay, all right.
I thought that might catch attention.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so the minutes of April 6, 2021.
A couple of comments. First page, member's absent, Peter Goodwin. Insert after that parentheses, excused, close parentheses, period. Page two, third folded paragraph, second line, Kirk Beswick, B-E-S-W-I-C-K.
Third folded paragraph, oh, yep.
I think that's it. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
For me.
Anything else? All right, if no one has any other corrections to make, I entertain a motion to accept this April 6, 2021 minutes.
As amended, so moved.
Thank you, and I'll second it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
I abstain.
Okay. Okay, let's see, I think that might be pretty much it. Okay, does anybody have anything else?
I had talked to Bob Lohman. He said he didn't hear back from our committee appointments for the CIP.
Well, he's on the website.
He's been appointed, we voted for him.
Just tell him what I heard. Said nobody got back confirming his appointment.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Just letting them know.
You'll find him in the minutes, John.
Okay, yep.
In the minutes, Bob.
To that end, I don't know if anyone received a personal verification, but I can let them each know.
Yeah, well, I'll send Chuck and Bob, Suzanne-
Yeah.
And Paul.
And Paul Whelan.
Okay.
Do we know who the board of selectmen have appointed to this?
No, we don't.
They have not made an appointment?
We did do it at our meeting the other week there, and I can't remember what-
The last meeting?
The last meeting, yeah, it would be in our minutes.
I believe it was Linda, but-
I think so, but let me look.
And it would have been an alternate also, which might have probably would have been Brian.
April 7th, you think?
Pardon?
April 7th, you think?
Yeah.
All right.
I believe Brian would have been our alternate.
Hang on, one second, Madam Chairman.
Okay, we all-
Do we have a name?
I'm working on it.
He's working.
It was towards the end of the meeting, if you're going through-
You can't imagine how many times a letter CIP show up in that order in the selectmen's. Conservation, economic development. Conservation, economic development. Energy, heritage, Wolfboro waters... Did I really miss it somehow? I don't see it.
Okay, maybe you could...
I can send it out to the group tomorrow.
Send it to Jim and ask him to make sure they appoint someone.
Do you want to put onto the agenda, Madam Chairman, for next... Do you want to put onto next meeting's agenda the appointment by the planning board of the board of selectmen's representative?
Oh, you mean we should just go ahead and appoint somebody?
No, we don't just appoint somebody. If assuming that what Brad says is correct and that they did appoint somebody, we have to appoint them.
Okay, yeah, sure.
So, if we leave a slot open in our agenda...
Right.
Then, Tavis can stick the name in when he finds it.
Okay.
It's going to be somebody.
All right.
Yes, good.
Okay, yes, that's fine.
So, the agenda item, Tavis.
So, we all set, folks?
Oh, now it's a mission. That's fine.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we can move to adjourn then.
Second.
Thank you very much, everybody.